This time I call the February meeting of the County Commission to order. After the invocation, we'll stand for the flag and I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Clyde.
All right, we have an associate pastor for Calhoun Baptist, Wes Gardner, who happens to be a good Lincoln County native with good Lincoln County blood and I mean knew he was talented, but with Lincoln County blood, it makes him more talented. He can sing, he can do choreography for music programs, and he can preach a pretty good sermon. So Wes, if you would, give us the invocation, please.
Sit down, sit down, sit down. Benefit the flag. Would you pray with me? Almighty God, in the midst of what is very common in our culture, a very busy time, we pause. We pause to be still before you, to recognize that you are the source of all wisdom, that you are the giver of life. You have given to us the opportunity to steward those resources in this county well. Lord, thank you for these men and for their commitment to the betterment of our county, the commitment to do that well with integrity. So Father, I pray that you would guide this meeting, guide their thoughts, help them to consider the citizenry here. Think about how better that to create a place that our grandchildren, Lord, as one who came here to visit my grandchildren, the place I love to come, God, that this would continue to be a place that our kids love. We would grow, we would serve, Father, that we would dishonor you and all that. Pray that you would be with this meeting, for those that are presenting the decisions that need to be made. God ask that you would help us to make those, oh, for your sake, amen.
This time Commissioner Henderson will lead us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the brother of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Preacher, we appreciate you covering and spending a little time with us. I know you had to drive over and you know the rules. You can leave if you want to. You're welcome to leave. Thank you. Thank you for Commissioner Clyde for inviting me.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we are down to number four on your agenda, and that is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion that we approve the minutes asked sent to you?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Chair, here's none. All in favor, the most live, be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number five is approval of the agenda. I have an addition that I would like to add to it that was brought to me really less than, probably less than an hour ago. Captain Taylor is on the agenda, and he wants to ask us for approval to apply for a grant. And I'll just put him, Madam Clerk, at, we'll just call it 11B or something. How about that? We'll just put him down while he's already at the podium. He's not in here now. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda with that addition?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair, here's none. All in favor, the most live, be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, the motion is carried. Paul Minter reports. Item six A is Officer of the Verge, Mr. Serris, Director Brum.
Good evening, Chairmen, Commissioners. You have my printed reports. I will certainly answer any questions as best I can if you have.
You have a, you have a report. If you noticed on your report, we, we received 135 ambulance calls a month of January, and we transported 67, which is about normal. That's about half of our calls are run, and I think that's pretty much around with some of the counties in our area too. I don't know about they. Any questions to Mr. Brum? If not, B is the Recreation Department. You have that. Director Glaze is not here. Let's continue to remember him in prayer. His father-in-law passed away, and I think the funeral may be other visitations tonight. But that's why he's not here, but he's, if you read his report, basketball's going good and about to get about open. Flag football, I'm surprised, according to this registration, is running a little slow. This is New Year on that. But his report's in there. Six C is Finance Director Dawson.
Chairman, Commissioners, you have my report, and previously the chairman had asked me to provide some cash balances, and so I will do that now at the chairman's pleasure. Through the end of January, 31st of 2023, our cash balances in our major accounts, I'm not gonna read them all, our general fund has had a cash balance of $4,093,799. The American Rescue Plan Fund had a balance of $1,420,656. The Sflost Seven Fund had a balance of $880,291. The T-Sflost Fund had a balance of $696,156. The Solid Waste Fund had a balance of $605,998. The Sflost Six Fund had a balance of $515,726. And our Water Reserve Fund has a balance of 700, excuse me, $371,736. The total of all of our accounts, and there are many that I didn't read, at the end of January were $9,499,203. Chairman, Commissioners, in addition to that, we have $2,100,000 in our Raymond James CD investment accounts. And to date, those accounts have earned $22,185 in interest. Here it is my report.
Any questions, Director Dawson? If not, we accept your report as presented and given to Six D is Director Seymour, Public Works.
Chairman, members of the board, you have my written reports. I don't have anything to add to those unless you have some questions. I'll be willing, happy to answer those.
Any questions? I have a comment. I just noticed last month, because we have no, we don't have any, anything to do, because I think I saw somewhere, we only had in January three new residential building permits. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chairman. Typically, January and February are a little bit slow after the New Year and Christmas and all of that, but we are seeing more come in. So it's still standard to stay.
Any other questions, Director Seymour? Commissioner Tankersley?
In comparison, the 22, do you recall what we issued in 22?
I do not write off hand, but I can certainly get that number and send it to you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we go to item number seven is Arimathea Church Road, and I'm gonna turn that over to the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is some matter that has been discussed at length, and I just wanted to bring the Commissioners up to date. Most recently, as the Commission is aware, that the owner of property down off on the Free of Church Road has placed the gate across the dirt road, the dirt county road, Mr. Chairman, and it's been there for a few weeks, I guess. I viewed a picture today, and to me, it's very clear that it is blocking that county road, that county road that was created by prescription. As Mr. Seymour is aware and the chairman's aware, this has been a matter that's been discussed, ownership of this road, a couple of years or more. There was a previous owner that came in and talked about possibly the county abandoning that road and purchasing it. He was represented by an attorney in Augusta. The attorney in Augusta and I spoke, and then things went kind of quiet. Well, apparently, the property was then sold to the current owner, and he erected the gate across the road by prescription. And I believe I started communicating with an attorney in Savannah to try to resolve this, and I emailed the attorney in Savannah, I believe it was the 19th of January, and said that the gate was blocking the county road. And he emailed me at that time and said that on behalf of his client, he was going to file an action in Superior Court in Lincoln County to block the county from doing that. And I think as a courtesy from me, then I gave him an opportunity to file something. Nothing was ever filed. Another week or two later, I emailed him again and said, I haven't heard from him. Are you going to do something? And if not, the county is gonna take the gate down. And again, he threatened legal action, which is his right. And this past, I believe it was Monday, I spoke with the attorney by phone and told him there was a possibility that that gate would be coming down this week. And again, he said he was gonna file an action in Lincoln County to prevent us from, the county from doing that. As of this afternoon at 4:00, I have not received any legal documents from the attorney. So at this point, there is a gate blocking Arimathea Road, and it is a county road, and that is illegal.
Mr. Jackson, normally, it's been the, it's been the, it's customary that we have, that I have, as chairman, instructed Public Works to remove a gate when they are up without a board vote, but I always, board always knows because we discuss it before we do it.
Yes, sir.
Is that what we need to do? Do you recommend that we just instruct Public Works, Director Seymour, to go ahead and remove the gate?
I would, I would ask the board to vote on that direction. At least that way, it would be a signal directly from this empowered commission, because if there's litigation, the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County would be the defendant. So I just feel like personally, the board as a whole would be better off making this decision.
You heard the recommendation from the county attorney. Is there a motion that we instruct the Public Works, Director, to remove the gate?
That's a move, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins?
Now, I hope I'm wrong, but I understand that the post that holds this gate is on private property.
We have, we have.
Or is it doing the right of way?
We have thought that was, but the picture shows, and Director Seymour has sent his people down, and we have measured, and it's really, I don't know how wide the road is. We assume it's 30 foot. Would be, what is, this is no deed, we don't know, but it's 29, just a little over 29 feet. If you look at the picture, which I had here, that they took and sent to us, I still have not been down there. But if you look at that picture, you can tell it's in the old road bed.
I don't know.
So we discussed that, and what our options would be if that was on, if it wasn't on the right of way. And I knew we was gonna need a vote if we went the other way, but I did not do it, but I'm satisfied with that.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Tankersley?
All right, we know that the post is on the right of way. We know that, or we assume that. And the only reason I'm asking, do we need to send a surveyor down there and verify before we?
We, we talked about that too. What would he pull that off of? What would he use? If you look at that picture, it's in, I know one of the plain list shows that it's inside of the.
It looks like it.
Of the old thing. And we know it's 29, about 29 and a half foot, isn't it?
29 foot, six inches from outside the post to outside the post. There is actually a, I think you have a copy of it in your book. There's actually a plaque that was done, I believe, in 2020 that shows Arimathea Church Road going through there. So Jim Madison did that plaque. I'm assuming that he could take that plaque and pinpoint exactly where that right of way is based on the, on the, on the gates there and tell us for sure that it's all in the right of way. But at the same time, Commissioners, two things. Number one is, the posts, in my opinion, are really irrelevant as to whether or not they're on the right of way or not, because the gate is across the right of way. Number two is, we're not gonna get off of the right of way to remove them. Well, you know, I'm gonna have to take, and I'm sure most of y'all seen the picture that the chairman had on his phone, but these are pretty beefy posts. They're actually a four by six or six by eight steel post, and then the hinges are all welded, and the nuts are welded, so you can't disassemble it. We'll actually have to take a piece of equipment down there, tie a strap to the post and pull them up, put the concrete in. But we'll do all of that with the equipment sitting on the right of way, on the road bed, you know, and take the bucket, reach over there and just, you know, tie a rope to it or a strap to it and pull it up and lay it over on the side. But I mean, either way, if the poster, even on the, on private property, they are blocked in the right of way. You know, I mean, we've got to clear the right of way.
Yeah, you know, we use the example, is this road right out here. Somebody on this side of the road put a post on in their yard. Somebody put one on that side of the road, their yard, and hung a cable across it. I couldn't get back down to my house tonight. They still obstructed the road, whether they on the right of way or not, and we got a, we got what has, probed us, close to a century, built up, built up roads by prescription.
Yeah, the only other, the only other action we could take is to cut the lock and take, you know, take the gate and fold it back and maybe, you know, maybe secure it to a tree with a chain lock, but, you know, then, then you got the possibility of going back down there and cutting our chain lock, closing the back lock, and we back drive back where we had it.
All right. If we do remove it, when we do remove it, make sure the hole for.
Fill back in.
Fill back in, and we don't want something to come of that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor of the most live, be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I have a number, and I lost my, lost my, lost my agenda here. The next item is Goldman Johnson Road. Mr. Curtis Smith. Has he, has he talked to you at all?
Not since last Thursday. He said he was coming back today.
But he, he, we reminded him, and he knew to come back, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. No action on that one. Number eight is Bill Gates, pearly gates in promised land. Mr. Al Gray, Mr. Al, you no stranger? Back as my memory serves, believe he had last three months. Date your name for the record, and you got five minutes. Mr. Jackson, if you'll keep that up.
Yes, sir. I'm Al Gray, 2573 Salem Church Road, Lincoln.
Chairman Norman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. To me, these times are predicted in three books, The Cycles in the Old Testament, Rapid Technology Meeting Fear of Change and Future Shock, and Emerging Into the Fourth Turn. Summing these books up, the generations age into the last of those witnessing the cause and effect of the last calamity are gone. No one else knows. Today, the land promised to the young men and women of Lincoln County and beyond are on the verge of becoming no man's land, one man's land, and ultimately lost to them. The use of promised land is among the bundle of property rights according to any owners, and this includes the people. Where there are joint owners, it's prudent to have legal easement agreements defining the rights of each party or groups of party. Alas, with the Core in easements, there were and are no easement agreements other than the records of the Core, records of the state of Georgia, and those of Lincoln County. We have brought forth the body of evidence that two public roads threatening closure remain used in the public realm of promised lands. There are pearly gates controlling the access to the promised land of heaven. There isn't any leeway to get there either, as all is sin and fall short of the glory of God. I was at First Presbyterian once, where the pastor defined grace as being God's riches at Christ's expense. Alas, there's also devil's grace, which could be seen as government riches at citizens' expense. Without Christ, heaven is about the size of a 1960s telephone booth, yet too many Christians see government as the path to glory instead. No, there are no pearly gates to be seen on muddy Arimathea Road, and right now, the leeway of the owner is no way for the young folks to visit the White Rocks, no way for the public hunters to get to long used stands, and no way to use a perfectly pitched concrete boat ramp, one that new owner Lee's son and friends had used to launch two boats on the day that I was accused of trespassing by walking to it. One thing that struck me as odd, seeing the Arimathea Track survey work for previous owner Smithburn. At the time of the survey, very stern, strict no trespassing signs were erected at both ends of the property, on or near the road. There were turns, however, in an angled manner, and straightforward one was eight feet away and blocked by trees to give the impression that they didn't pertain to the road. Why would a landowner going to that much trouble have those signs positioned to convey any other intent? Finally, there's Bill Gates. Let's consider the local myth about how Gates became a member of Augusta National. Allegedly, the members were not keen to let him in, but he started taking options to buy land critical to their plans as a wedge, not one to get out of a sand trap, but one to get admission to that club. It looks to me that Lincoln Canyons have a pretty good land wedge to keep our admission to Arimathea Church Road in the bundle of rights that came with it. Being potentially charged with criminal trespass is a serious matter. While my years makes each such intrusion on my rights a teachable moment, that isn't the case with everyone. Previously unaddressed is that my young neighbor was visited by the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department and allegedly made the sign and note saying he would be guilty of criminal trespass by going inside the gate on Booth France Road, the other road being illegally closed. Now, the he and I got actual wrongful criminal trespassing charges, but you were flirting with danger for the county with our money and reputation. Before we reach the pearly gates in the promised land, take down the wrongful gates, do a better job, and we'll meet later to tackle Bill Gates and laugh a lot. Finally, I noticed note 20 years ago, the early edition of this book would have prohibited development around fantasy Georgia and between commercial nodes all through Columbia County. I worked against it, and we got it changed. Do unto others as they've done for you. You don't have to walk thousands of miles down two Lincoln County roads and wear five pairs of boots to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Item number 10 was Mr. Greg Grant, but I think he called the clerk and said he wouldn't be able to come. All right, moving on to number 11. Captain Taylor's here to talk to us about jail showers, and we also included him as 11A or B. Which one will that be? A. 11A. 11 is the jail shower, and 11A would be the grant, and we'll talk about that when we get to it. Captain Taylor?
Chairman, County Commissioners, appreciate the time tonight. First thing we're gonna talk about is the jail shower repair. We're almost to the end of this, because we've got three showers left in the jail that we're gonna remodel, and we're gonna be looking at using the GLP funds to do that with. And those funds again are, come from probation fines and court fines and ticket fines from Superior Court and Public. I think it's $6,900.
Okay, we talked about this, I think, at the, at the work session the other day, but we know what it is. Let me get back to my place. Number 11. Okay, we got this. We need a motion to spend $6,900, close to it, from the GLP fund, to repair the showers and some floors in the jail. Is there a motion?
So moved, Chairman.
That's second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Commissioner Clyde?
I just have one. Lady, is that, that's all the showers now be?
That'll be completed. It's D block, C block, and the intake shower at the front, and that'll be all the showers up the jail. So we'll have them completely redone, and we'll move on to something else.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the most live, be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. The most is carried. While you're there, let's move on to what he's wanting to do is apply for a grant to help pay for body cameras if we get them.
Yes, sir. Georgia Sheriff's Association just passed along a email the other day. Basically, it is focused around rural departments with less than 50 full-time school personnel, and it is a grant to apply for the body cameras. And it pays up to $2,000 per camera, and it is a, what they call a one-to-one match.
We're assuming that's 50%, so whatever.
Yes, sir, that's what we're assuming.
We have talked body cameras before. In fact, I think to even budget. And he just got this, if you read that, that they just sent it out the other day, I mean, today or yesterday.
Yes, sir. And I have to apply for.
By February 17th.
By February 17th, yes, sir. So that's why I hadn't been able to research it as much as I would need to, but I.
All this motion is doing is allowing them to go ahead and apply for the grant.
Yes, sir.
We, we want to do that where we know exactly what it'd cost if we did. This is giving them authority to apply for, for the deadlines. Our motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde.
And once we, yeah, like I said, when I need to come back to the commission about the body cameras, I will come back, hopefully have a grant placed off. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You gonna vote on this?
All in favor of the most live, be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, the most is carried. Mr. Smith, if you would, come on to the podium. While you're coming, you got five minutes to talk to the Commissioners, and you need to state your name and your address. When you start, would speak into that microphone, just pull it down a little bit. I said, get up to that microphone and talk into it pretty good. I can't hear good.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
And then a progress has been made on that road, isn't it?
As far as what? As far as what?
Let you tell me.
Yes, sir, I told you a few months ago when you came to see me, that it was voted on by the people in the CSRA, it's under the Phil Project Tier Two, which means that it's probably five years down the road because it's in Tier Two, but it's been voted on by the people, not the county commission.
All right.
If the funds are appropriated through the state, the state will acquire all of them right away, and they will bid it all out, do it, Lincoln County won't have to do anything.
All right.
So your road will be paid, I just hope me and you live long and see it, but it's already.
I hope it do.
It's a done deal.
But everybody down there is talking about it, but they don't, they don't try to come up there and shit about it.
Well, that lady right there, she lives on it too. I hear from her about much more to do than you. But it is, it is already done.
All, all right.
All we gotta do now is wait on the state to get to it, but we know it's gonna probably be four or five years before they start on it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Because it's a ten-year project, and it just started in January.
Okay, appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, you have a good day. Is it raining out there yet? Okay. Thank you. You too. All right, we back to item thirteen, is that correct?
Twelve, I think.
Twelve, that's right, I, I, apply for USDA grant loan ambulance and equipment Director
Chairman, that's gonna be Director Broom?
Oh.
I just gave you the motion.
Well, I got, I got Director Broom right here. I was thinking all that money would come under him, but go ahead.
I want you to notice I walked up here without a stick.
Yeah, I noticed that.
I think you said something last week. Uh, we, Mr. Chairman, in short, we need a motion for Director Dawson and I to work on a USDA grant loan, not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. This will purchase, uh, uh, an ambulance and some needed EMS equipment. Y'all had a presentation on the CPR machines, uh, in your work session, and that's what this, this item is. We're request, requesting the authorization to apply for USDA grant loan up to three hundred thousand dollars.
That's a loan grant. We don't know exactly what it'd be, hope fifty percent, but it could be thirty percent, but it's a loan grant, same as we bought the fire truck and other things with what this is. So what we doing is giving, y'all got to make a motion if you gonna, if you do this to allow me and the clerk to sign the papers with US Rural Development, uh, for this, for up to three hundred thousand dollars, and mine says for new ambulance EMS equipment. You have anything to add, Director Dawson?
That's it, Chairman, that's correct.
All right, is that a motion?
Who moves, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Here is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. So we will start the process of working on. Item thirteen is the CSRA Alliance Fort Garden Hotel Motel Taxes, we're on last week, so Director Dawson's handling this.
Chairman, I am seeking a motion to, uh, to change the funding source for this, and to do that, we would need to amend a previous motion, so I'm seeking a motion to amend the motion made on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, uh, at, at the meeting for the funding of the CSRA Alliance by striking the, the term general fund and inserting the term hotel motel fund, that will allow me to pay it out of right fund.
Okay, we discussed this two last week, need a motion to amend the motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is that a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankley, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion?
Same amount of money, correct?
Yes, sir. The only thing changing is what checking account.
No discussion, all in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item number fourteen is an update on the one twenty-five cafeteria plan, Director Dawson.
Chairman Commissioners, I am not ready to discuss that this evening or bring it to you, I would ask that you lay it on the table indefinitely.
Yeah, the recommendation from the clerk, lay it on the table indefinitely. Do I take a motion, or is that what we do?
It takes a motion.
Is that a motion, that we lay it on the table indefinitely? So moved, Chairman. The second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Who second it?
Thank you. Down here.
Oh. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankley, any discussion on the motion? Here is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. That don't mean it could be indefinitely. We might not have to bring it back, and it might, if we do, then you can bring it back when you do it indefinitely. Item thirteen, mandatory payroll deposit, this will be called the Taylor Bill, Director Dawson.
Chairman Commissioners, uh, I am seeking approval from the board to, uh, make, uh, mandatory direct deposit for all payroll effective the first full pay period in July, which would be our next fiscal year. Uh, we have worked out an arrangement with our bank to take care of any employee who is unable, uh, to get a checking account, and so our bank will be able to provide them with a debit card so they would be able to, uh, perceive that direct deposit, uh, and I'm just seeking the board's approval, uh, to do that.
Okay, you've heard the request, we talked about it last week, I think, do we have any of this against you?
No, sir, uh, about eighty-five percent of all of our employees get a direct deposit, so it would affect a very small number of employees, and I just happen to know that most of those employees have checking accounts, so the, the actual number of people that might have to seek assistance from our bank or their bank for a checking account would be very small and, and be negligible, uh.
Okay, is that a motion that we vote on the mandatory payroll direct deposit beginning in July the first of our new budget year in twenty-three?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, the motion is a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankley, second by Commissioner Clyde, Collins, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Clyde.
I just say, I, I can understand some, uh, folks' concern about this, you know, and is it just because of hipster county line makes it smoother on us is the biggest reason, or?
So, Commissioner, uh, it, it does make it a little bit easier, it, our employees get their, uh, funds faster, we still get an occasional request because somebody's gonna be out of town who gets a paper check that would like to get their check early. Uh, the other thing it helps us do is that, um, um, the, our bank and, uh, both of our banks, not just the single, but our banks are, have been complaining about, uh, fraudulent checks and other things, and this would prevent some, uh, some issues with fraudulent checks or lost checks, our employees would, would have access to their money, um, but it'll show up, and we get paid on Friday, it shows up in their account on Thursday night. Thanks, sir.
I think that twenty-five percent, so that don't like it, I, I understand one's probably twenty of that twenty-five percent, but, um, is it not true that if you use, if you use a debit card for all your expenditures, the government can find out what you're doing through that as well as he can depositing your check in the bank? It's not, in other words, there's not any difference if they want, IRS, anybody wanted, the federal government wanted to look at it, whether you put it in the bank or give them a check, they go cash it at the bank, is that not true, Mr. Dawson?
I, the answer to that question, Chairman, is, is we provide the federal government with a W-three and, and copies of the W-two for every employee that we pay, so they know how much money we pay every employee, yes, sir.
I just want to be sure we got it going, I know that we got at least two people in this room to get up all over the piece of it.
Whether we issued a paper check or direct deposit, we report all our earnings every, every quarter and annual, yes, sir.
Okay, the board of commissioners would defer any liability of this to the Director of Finance, in case anybody in law enforcement is not in agreement with this, they can take that up with Director Dawson, all in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye, we got that. No, we don't, all in favor, aye, all opposed, like sign, motion is carried, and, uh, that's the way it is. Item number sixteen is Director Seymour, abandonment of Sweet Gum Lane.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is an item to be discussed, um, I think at Lincoln in the, in the work session. Um, we have got an application, um, from Ross Waters, who resides at the very end of, uh, Sweet Gum Lane. Uh, he actually owns, uh, one parcel, bought a separate parcel, uh, which is across the street of that dead-end road, I think you already have a plat, uh, that I provided to you from, uh, Madison and Associates showing that, uh, right away, and so, um, I am seeking a, um, motion to determine, uh, that this road, uh, serves no purpose to the general public and to abandon this portion of the road, and then once that's done, uh, we'll go to the next step, uh, as far as advertising, Mr. Jackson will handle, uh, that portion of it, Mr. Chairman.
I think we're all familiar with it, it's just some property that was joined together, and the road now splits the same two property owners. It ends at the Co-Engineer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that a motion that we approve the abandonment process, start the process of abandonment, that means that they will be here next month or the month after, how long is this?
Correct, what'll happen is, is, is y'all will vote to that it serves no public purpose and vote to abandon, and then Mr. Jackson will then start the process of, uh, the advertisement portion, uh, that they will, that you will dispose of at the next meeting, yes, sir. Is that correct, Mr. Jackson?
Well, it'll actually be a notice that the, uh, commission is going to abandon, but technically it couldn't be abandoned at this meeting, and just, this is just the start of the process, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is that a motion, we start the process of abandonment of Sweet Gum Lane?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion? Commissioner Tankley.
Uh, I noticed there at the end of that lane is Lake Thurman, or Clark Hill Lake, the way we like to, you know, call it, but nobody uses that road for access to the lake or anything like that.
No, sir, actually, it's, it's undeveloped at, at current, if you can even drive down it, it's got pretty good-sized pine trees.
It's not even a road by prescription now.
No, no, sir, it is not.
Through, Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, we'll take up how we're gonna do it in our next work session.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We will, Commissioner Tankley, by the work session, we gonna have something that we'd like to set up a policy probably on, on how we gonna do this, like we talked about, maybe taxes, us, tell us what it's worth, and all that, that's pretty much what you're talking about.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, we gonna have that done. Item seventeen is a new Pitney Bow's fold stuff machine, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um, this is another item to discuss at the work session. Uh, we have a, a piece of equipment in, in our office, I think was bought in two thousand and a half, uh, that has, um, seen its, uh, better days, we're having some issues with it, mechanical issues with it, finding, hard to find parts for it, um, and this is actually a folding stuffing machine that we use to send water bills out every month, um, along with, um, flyers from time to time from other departments, um, those that use to get county water bills, I'm satisfied that y'all theme, you know, Recreation Department flyers in there, you theme, um, uh, theme Citizen Flyers in there. Anyway, um, where I'm at today is I'm looking for a motion to allow us to, uh, purchase a new machine, uh, that machine would be a, a budgetary item moving forward, um, at the cost of four hundred and one dollars and eighty-five cents, and this is good for, uh, five years, it'd be a five-year lease, uh, and at the end of five years, we would either reutilize for a new one or, uh, or return it back to you, in a fine alternate, uh, way, it's kinda like we do our postage machines now, we do the same thing when I pivot to the postage machines current.
Are we paying for this monthly or annually?
It would be paid for, I, I think monthly, I'm satisfied that they, do we pay for our postage machines monthly?
Well, I'm, I'm showing that, I'll make sure we write eleven thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars forty-nine cents for the equipment. Is that not right?
No, sir.
That's what I had last week.
No, sir. Uh, I, I provided the clerk with a new quote, it's a monthly fee, it's not a, it's not a.
Should be in the very front.
Huh?
It should be in the very front of that number.
Should be down at the bottom there.
Four, 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 one, eighty-five.
Yeah, I said, four, one, eighty-five.
Monthly or, or quarterly, we pay for a quarterly, twelve hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents a quarter.
Director Dawson, should we just pay this quarterly, or how would be easy if you keep up with?
Chairman, well, they, they invoice us, and, and so we, we could either, it's up to us whether we wanted monthly or quarterly payments.
What's easiest for you all?
Uh, quarterly.
Okay, why don't we do it that way then?
That, uh, we approve a quarterly payment for a thousand two hundred five dollars and fifty-five cents.
I thought that was your hearing, now you're going.
Oh, yeah, I tell you, I don't need one now with this.
If I got the motion right.
Quarterly, twelve oh five fifty-five, Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And that's for five years?
That is for five years, yes, sir.
Y'all break that down into quarters, that'd be twenty.
Twenty-four dollars and one and a half.
All right, is that a motion? This comes out the water fund, right?
That's correct, it would be a budget item, yes.
In the water, in the water fund, not the general fund, is that a motion?
Who moves, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Not all in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number eighteen is a crane rental for clock repair, Director Seymour.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um, I bring this to you tonight, um, I know it's under, uh, the, uh, spending capabilities, however, uh, it's coming out of, um, our Splosh Six Fund, which requires the vote from more commissioners, but we talked about this at the work session as well, uh, we have already purchased the equipment, um, for the, uh, clock replacement, uh, on the courthouse up in the bell tower, uh, one of the stumbling blocks was a crane to be able to do that, uh, we were able, the original quote we got was around eight thousand dollars for a crane, uh, I've been able to negotiate a price of four thousand dollars for that crane, uh, and, um, I'm asking the board of commissioners to approve, and I think, uh, Director Dawson, um, in the work session asked that y'all approve up to six thousand in case we had some carryovers, you know, whether there's a search order or something, so, uh, I'm asking y'all to approve up to six thousand dollars to come out of Splosh Six, uh, of the, um, courthouse renovation fund.
Okay, you heard the request, up to six thousand, Splosh Six, for a crane to install the work on the new clock that's going in, I understand today we got some squirrels up there too, love to chase them out of that one. Is that a motion?
Who moves, Mr. Chairman?
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankley, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Here is none, all in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried.
I'm sorry, just to give you an update, it is already scheduled as well, it, it'll be done on the sixteenth, which is next week.
Hope it doesn't rain.
Me too.
Martin Crossroads Volunteer Fire Department Equipment Purchase, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, I'm gonna switch hats here for a minute and go in, uh, as the, as the president of Martin Crossroads Fire Department, so, um, we are asking for, um, four new air packs, uh, to be purchased, um, we are in, in need of some that are out of date, um, and we're asking that the, um, commission approve the expenditure of the balance of the Splosh Six that was left over, uh, for Martin Crossroads, I think the number I originally had was twenty-one thousand two hundred, um, and then the balance would be paid for by Martin Crossroads Fire Department. Um, the total cost, I believe, is thirty-seven thousand, uh, six hundred and twenty dollars, uh, so we're asking this board to approve the purchase, I mean, the expenditure of the twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars, and then the crossroads would, uh, bear the cost of the balance.
And that's Splosh Six?
Yes, sir, that would be Splosh Six.
All right, Director Dawson, my question is one we had the other day. We paying for thirty-seven, uh, twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars, the crossroads gonna pay for sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty, are we gonna break that down to, how many is that?
It's four, Chairman.
Are we gonna break that down to the ones the county owns and the ones the Fire Department owns?
Yes, sir.
So actually, the, the, the number that we purchased, we not gonna look at six, what did you say, six?
Four.
Four, we're not looking at four, we gonna pay, what are we gonna, what do you do if that gets you to a half of one?
Chairman, uh, I would ask to, that, uh, the.
Chairman, uh, I would ask to, that uh, the board authorize the, the President Seymour and myself to work out the details of, of, of the equipment. Because we could probably move some of that equipment around so that we can get to a, a number.
That's it, that's it, me and you, y'all. Okay, is that a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, is that second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion? There is none, all in favor, mostly everyone saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. All right, now we getting down to the item twenty is the alcohol ordinance update, and that says me. I think we understand exactly what this is. This, this will be the first reading. It won't take a, um, it won't be a vote until next week. Captain Taylor is here if he wants to inject something, but this is simply where we working on a, on an ordinance to, to change to. Work special events and the, the salary is not less than four hours and it's twenty-five dollars an hour. Y'all got it and know it, and we discussed it last week. Is it, is there anything else that we need to do, Mr. Attorney, other than, glad this is first reading. You can start reading and I can stop you. Is that what we need to do?
Yes, sir. That's fine, and you're correct, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it will be section ten dash one twenty, security and public safety, capital A. Any special event or meeting occurring at any location within the boundaries of Lincoln County, Georgia, which has been awarded any alcohol license and serves alcohol as a special event, shall be required to have a minimum of one deputy sheriff or other security officer approved by the sheriff or his or her designate on duty at the location at all times during the special events hours. Once the number of people at the special event exceeds seventy-five, then one additional deputy sheriff or other security officer approved by the sheriff or his or her designate must be present. Once the number of people at the event is above one hundred and fifty, the sheriff of Lincoln County, his or her designate, shall determine the number of additional deputy sheriffs or other security officer approved by the sheriff required at the special event location. If the sheriff or his or her designate determines that in order to provide for the safety of the citizens of Lincoln County and others, the sheriff or his or her designate may conduct a review of the special event and determine that additional security personnel required for matters such as traffic control, parking, security, or safety.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd like to suspend the reading.
Yes, sir.
I hear no objection from the members. We'll suspend the reading. I will ask the clerk though to transmit this over to the director, IT director, and we will place it on the website. Uh, just as quick as possible, not tomorrow, no later than Monday, if we can do that. We'll place it on the website for the public to, to read it, and we'll vote on it next week. Okay, ordinance, we have another ordinance. It's known as the uh, dangerous dog ordinance, I think. We called it a animal deal here.
Next month.
Yes, sir.
We gonna vote on it next month.
Yeah. Next month, I mean, I'm sorry. Y'all keep it straight. Next week, next month. The next one is the animal ordinance. It's, I think it's got, really it says the order shall be known as the dog control ordinance. This is the same as the other one. Um, it's, it's a little more detailed, but the same process has to be done. This is making amendments to what was passed in the eighties. It, it's presently a county ordinance. I think two thousand and twelve, I read somewhere that the state law made some changes in that. And this is incorporated into the dangerous dog ordinance. Um, but this is being done and I will though, um, ask the county attorney if he'll start reading it at section fourteen thirty-two, violation relating to caring for animals. We won't read much of this one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, violation relating to caring for animals, small a, failure to provide human care. It should be unlawful for the owner humane care. It should be unlawful for the owner or custodian of any animal to refuse or fail to provide such animal humane care. Little b, animal suffering. It should be unlawful for any owner or custodian of any animal to permit the animal to live in conditions that cause suffering to animal or directly cause any suffering of an animal.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask if we suspend this, but I do wanna bring your attention if you go over to page ten. And that's section fourteen dash forty-one. Where you fully understand the fact that this will have to have a animal control board. Which will be appointed, the same as we appoint other boards. Each commissioner will appoint one from within their district. Chairman will appoint countywide. We will have a four, five member board. They elect their own chairman and they will have to be a functional board when something happens. It ties it into the health department of rabid animals. They have to have hearings. The hearing goes before the animal control board. We've heard a lot about this on news in the last few weeks since a young man was attacked in Columbia County. So this is basically what, what has to happen. The animal control board will be fully involved, so you need to be thinking about who we can, who you wanna put on that board. You better put somebody that's pretty smart when you go ahead and read this thing. And let me tell you this. We have the second reading next month, which it becomes effective in March. If you read the last sentence of that section, it says that. Well, this tells you that, I don't know where it's headed here, but it says that uh, oh, I got it. Section, section of fourteen forty-one paragraph G, the board of commissioners of Lincoln County, shall serve as the animal control board until such time as an independent animal control board is established. So if you don't want us being on the animal control board, we need to start finding somebody that wants to, that wants to serve on this. Is that objection? We'll suspend the reading of this and it will do the same thing. The clerk will transmit it to the IT department. Be put on the website for the public to read and it will come to a vote next month. Okay, is everybody satisfied with that? Board of commissioners, library board, Commissioner Henderson?
Not ready at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Recreation advisory board, Commissioner Collins?
Chairman, I also am not ready at this time.
Okay. Those two are not ready, but we getting them ready in your, in your dog control man. That motion we adjourn.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tanklin, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? There is none, all in favor, mostly everyone saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We adjourn.